All meeting to order. It's five forty-five. Carl, you want to help us with the pledge?
The pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and where we have individual with liberty and justice for all.
All meeting to order. Everyone is present.
On the agenda, I've added resignation of Jim Lang, our teacher, to the agenda. So that's okay. We need a motion with addition.
Is there a motion with that revision?
That would be in my concern, if I may.
No, it won't. It's on the agenda in eight, eight to...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment? It's just the photographer. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the February eleventh, two thousand fourteen regular meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Communications.
Mrs. Jepner? It's got the addition on it. The agenda I handed out now has got the addition, the resignation. Up here? Yeah, it's down in here. Okay. Communications. We have a large number of donations and very nice ones. Conor Act donations. There was an article in the paper last week, I believe, two weeks ago, about the Conor Act program. And that's funded annually by donations from three major donors to Wapaka Foundry, First National Bank, and Farmer State Bank. Last month, you accepted a donation from Farmer State. This month, it's two donations from Wapaka Foundry and First National Bank. At six hundred and fifty dollars each. In addition, Wapaka Foundry, four hundred pairs of safety glasses, valued at approximately sixteen hundred dollars. Someone from the Wapaka Foundry, the name of Joel Johnson, repaired our lathe. And had been inoperable for over a year, I believe, so we really appreciate that. And then, Wapaka Foundry, two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and one cent for a new Millimatic three fifty P welder for the high school CTE program. It's not the first time they've donated a welder either. So we really appreciate those donations from the Foundry. Shopko donation of two thousand dollars. You may have been involved in this. In December, Shopko ran a promotion that if they got, they would donate a dollar for every signature. They got up to two thousand dollars from people who went shopping at Shopko. And they did get the two thousand dollars, two thousand signatures, and donated the two thousand dollars. Nice donation from Shopko. We had a Crystal Menzel parent donate a Bundy flute, a middle school music program, valued at a hundred dollars. And then Jim Plismit from ExxonMobil Travel Center in combination with Van Zelen Oil Company. This is the second year, at least the second year, where they've donated five hundred dollars in an educational alliance grant. We had an anonymous donor donate four girls' basketball sweatsuits, eight hundred twenty-five dollars. And the Wapaka Breakfast Rotary Club. If you recall, they funded a number of grants earlier this year. There was one that didn't quite make it, but they really wanted to fund it. So they used a thousand dollars from funds that went unspent from previous grants because the actual cost came in less than the grant was written for. And they added seven hundred and seventy-six dollars to fund a grant in the high school library. Heidi Newickie wrote that grant for, I think it's audiobooks, or some type of setup for audiobooks. So those are the donations.
Can I ask a question? You're the musical one here. What is a Bundy flute?
Oh, it's a regular flute made by Bundy Company.
Okay.
How easy.
I told you that'd be easy. I'm not going to embarrass you. School board visits.
We'll need a motion to approve those donations.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to approve with appreciation. That's about ten thousand dollars worth of donations. That's unbelievable in such a small community. Wow.
All in favor? Aye. School visits. Anybody go?
I did not make a formal school visit, but I did attend the FFA breakfast, which I know a number of people did here. Very, I think, well-attended by this group overall. I was surprised that there weren't even more people there because the minute you walked into the school, you could just, the egg bait just overwhelmed you and it just drew you down to that end of the building. The kids that were working and serving, I thought, did an excellent job and very much appreciated spending some time talking with them. I also had the opportunity to attend the high school academic banquet last night, put on by the Student Council. I thought that went very, very smoothly. I know they have the assistance of a number of individuals in putting that on, but the commons was pretty much full between students and their parents and other relatives. And I think sometimes when we are focusing on how some of our sports teams are doing and everything, we almost forget at times the, how some of our students are excelling at academics. And I think that banquet was very rewarding to go to from my standpoint. Finally, I also attended the St. John's University Men's Chorus Concert, in which they included a couple of sessions, one in which they had the Wapaka High School Men's Choir join the chorus. And another point or two points in which they had the girls, the Women's Chorus, join the St. John's Chorus. And just really a very, very well-done. The sound that came out of what I believe would be about thirty-four voices, when we did not have our students singing with them, it's just amazing. And I would say that our kids held their own with them, quite honestly. I thought that when they went up and rejoined these individuals, that they did very well. So one of the reasons, I don't know if you wanted to explain, Dave, as to how they ended up here, as at the end of their tour or not, but...
The director, and his name is Axel Fieldman, I believe, is the father of our high school vocal teacher, Kira Morrissey. And they were on a trip down to St. Louis, Cincinnati, a number of other stops. On the way back home, they stopped here, spent the night, Saturday night, at various homes in the community. And then Sunday morning, left at eight AM to go to Minneapolis for our performance. Then from there, they were going home. So they were on the road since the Thursday prior, so a week ago Thursday, so about ten days, eleven days. If I could take you just a minute. The white shirts are our students.
(Choir singing) Rise up, oh men of God, have done with blessed deeds. Give heart and soul and mind and strength to serve our King of Kings. Rise up, oh men, rise up, oh men, of sin, of error, of wrong, of error, of wrong. We begin a day of brotherhood and then a night of wrong. Rise up, oh men, rise up, in the church, oh youth of faith. In the cell, in the world, through her task, rise up and make her praise. Let thy love, thy trust, thy grace, spread, where is thee, as God? As brothers of the Son of Man, rise up, oh men of God.
Keep in mind that our men's choir, or boys, however you want to report, they practiced with these guys once that same afternoon. So they really held their own.
Anyone else?
I made a visit to the high school today. Had a great visit. I visited several of the classrooms. And I started in the food science area. And I was amazed to hear that between the Culinary One, Culinary Two class and the Food Today class, that one quarter of our students are involved in that program. Over, about two hundred students take those food classes or culinary classes. And half of them are young men. So it was interesting to hear that. So the class was telling me all of it. They were studying food poisoning today. So they were telling me about botulism and salmonella and listeria and E. coli and the symptoms and how people mistake the flu for food poisoning. So it was very informative. It's just all practical stuff. I was like, what a great class. So anyway, it was, Mrs. Schwanberg welcomed me there and that was great. Then I walked down the music wing and followed the beautiful choir, Voices. And Mr. Wolfgram was leading the concert choir, or actually discussing with the concert choir. But when I went in then, they sang a song on demand. He said, you know, sing something for Mrs. Mann. So they did a beautiful spiritual that was lovely. And they're just really an excited bunch and they were really, really good. So that was awesome. Passed the lunch ladies, who were cleaning up after lunch and, and that place is immaculate. I'm just amazed at how clean the school is. Walked past the library ladies and they were in there at the desk. I was amazed, there was a catchy bulletin board in the hallway that said, "Read box." And it looks just like a red box. It says, "Read box, check out for the night, no cost." And I thought, oh, red boxes. It's so clever when you look at it, but, you know, it's like a gimmick for the library. Lovely. Walked down to the main hall and Mr. Polo's class. I mean, so many of the classes were, you could tell the students were busy at work and whatever. I kind of have a hard time sometimes, if they're taking a test or something, to walk into those classrooms. So I always look for classrooms where a visitor isn't going to be too disruptive. So Mr. Polbisky's class was media. And I was just amazed. All the young people were making their own videos. And your son was in the class?
Uh-oh.
He showed me all about his, it was great. He showed me all about the video he put together. They were putting together a video to advertise some product, or promote some product. So it was all about learning phase in, phase out, you know, how to enhance whatever the product is. Every one of the students had a different product and I was just amazed at how they were doing it. They had to do their own voiceovers and it was incredible. So they were all excited about what they were doing and moving on to their next project, where they'd have to write the script for what they're going to do. And that is like the end-of-the-year project. I was amazed to hear how many of our students actually go on to videography, to the Art Institute in Chicago or Minneapolis. We have several students that have done that because of these classes. So that was great. Then I walked down the English hallway. And a lot of them were deep in work. But Mr. Fair's class happened to be in the computer lab. And so they were doing remakes of Dante's Inferno. And so they had to write twenty, twenty stanzas of rhyme, of poetry. And we're talking a couple pages, about a descent into hell. And similar to Dante's Inferno. And use any reason at all for your descent. So it was amazing. I was amazed at the creativity. You know, one guy was, you know, people that were bullies were descending down. Another guy was, he was a save-the-planet kind of guy. And so anybody that steps on turtles or drives over turtles or whatever, you fall right down. So, and then they had to pick out the visuals for this. And they really did, they were really doing a nice job. It was, it was an awesome way, I think, to learn about one classic piece of work and design your own to mimic it. What a, what a neat way to learn. So anyway, it was a great visit. Everybody was all excited and, you know, welcoming and happy to see you. And ladies in the office were delightful and security system worked great. So it was a great visit. It's a great school.
Anyone else? I went to the Learning Center this afternoon. And I noticed that, once I got in, I went into the office, they have new screens in, or new large screens that show the pictures of the people that are coming in.
Like monitors?
Monitors. And I hadn't seen that before. And I think that's a real good addition. Now, of course, I walked in and I'm looking at this little, the little thing. You want to get down there and make sure that they see who you are. And you get, you get in the office and then you look at that and you think, oh geez.
They, the same, I noticed the same thing in high school. See, this is big screen. But it's good because they can see the full person.
You're right. What they have and what they don't have.
The digits could drive, well, at one point, and then sense where others.
Well, that's what I was trying to do when I first got in there. We'll check the tape. Yeah. I went up and saw Mrs. Anderson, Lisa. And of course, they were having root beer floats. And I came just too late for that. And I learned something about, there's, they have a saying, "Never eat soggy waffles." Do you know what that is?
A soggy waffle?
Nope, no. What, what does that stand for? Never eat soggy waffles.
The acronym R N D, S W.
Right, B. There you go. Yeah, that's it. Northeast, Southwest. So... Well, you know what? Not for the, you know, the kids. And, and before I left, I ran into Mrs. Benton. And she had just gotten done talking to the teacher on the trail. She was really, really excited about that.
It ended today, didn't it?
Yeah. But she had, she apparently had some time with the, with the lady and when she was up there. And so it was, she was pretty excited. But it was fun.
Next item is the notice of vacancy for WSB, Board of Directors, Region Seven. If anyone is interested in filling that vacancy or putting their name in to fill that vacancy, let me know. Then brings us the FFA newspaper supplement and then Miss Herb has something for you. And I'm sure she has something to say as well.
I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. I didn't know if everybody had a chance to take a look at the Wapaka FFA supplement that was in the Wapaka Post. And when you guys talk about community support, I mean, every ad in here costs thirty dollars. And we had a lot of support from the community every year. And this is the twenty-first year we had a supplement.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Remember, you were highlighted once. You were highlighted once. Ben, you're always highlighted.
Thanks.
There you go. And so if you'd like to take an opportunity, when you have time, to go through it. For National FFA Week, we were on WDUX. We had a PSA that ran throughout the week. And on Tuesday, we had the teacher breakfast. And along with a petting zoo that ran over till Wednesday for the elementary kids in our school district. On Thursday, we held an Olympics. And we haven't done that in a while. And that was a lot of fun. And Mr. Eckerbrecht did not kiss a pig. They wanted Mr. Fair to kiss a pig. So next year, maybe Carl can kiss a pig. It was kind of warming up and puckering up for that. We even put lipstick on Mr. Fair. We were going to put it on the paper, but we thought Mr. Fair was... And then on Friday night, we had, and this is like the fifth year we've done this, we have like family movie night. And we get the rights to, we had Munster University. And we played it in PAC. And anybody who brought in a canned food product that we gave to the food pantry got in free. And then halfway through the movie, we gave everybody like a little juice box and a granola bar and popcorn. And then when they were done eating, we went back in and finished it up. So we had a bunch of young families there. Also on that week, we had thirty-one proficiencies. And I don't know if some of you guys know what a proficiency is, but it's a computerized record book of one's job, work experience, or just what you do to learn about a career. And it can be anything from working at a job to owning. So we've had kids that work in wildlife and biotechnology. We have some that own cattle. We have some that work in a food processing industry. There's aquaculture, there's organic farming, landscaping, greenhouse management. So really, any phase of a career in agriculture, there is a proficiency for that. And students write down the hours that they work, what they've learned. If they own animals, it's what they own, what is the depreciation, what are the feed costs, what is their inventory. They have to write down competencies and skills that they've learned. And then they have six pictures in the back of the application with a caption, along with a resume and a recommendation. And last year, we had six state winners. And two went on the nationals, so we'll see how we did this year. We had two, excuse me, eight state degree recipients. And one is running for a star farmer, and that's Ben Nicholl, who graduated this past year. And we have two American degree recipients. And one is going to be trying for a star farmer, and that's Ashley Orr. And she was, graduated two years ago, I think, as food vegetarian. And so, and then we had speaking contests. This is all like in a week and a half of National FFA Week. We have an FFA speaking contest, such as prepared speaking, extemporaneous, parliamentary procedure, the Quiz Bowl, job interview. And there's at least one person going on from each of those categories. And two can go on from around our section. And so we're kind of busy in the FFA. And I'd also like to add that in our house that Mr. Larson is building, the drywall is being let in. So we're moving on. And if any of you guys would like to take a tour, I'll be more than happy to give you a Nicholl tour. So, and I agree with community support. We've had a lot of business leaders volunteer their time. And perhaps when the host's finished, we could get a list together and thank those for the volunteer time they put in, as well as teaching the kids how to do certain skills.
Cue.
For the record, I would note that that week, FFA Week, is one of our colder weeks. And that Thursday was a particularly cold day, I believe. But I got a call early in the morning from Miss Herb saying, "You cannot cancel school today because we've got these FFA activities." So anybody has any concerns about not canceling school, I think... Next item, next item is the update on our Wapaka four-year kindergarten program. And then eventually, the approval of the provider contracts. Just like you to know that we've been, we've really worked hard to make this a community-based program. And when we started out, we thought that we would probably have some teachers that we hired sent out to the preschools and teach their 4K program in most schools. Some of the 4K programs already had a teacher, so we would fund their teacher to a certain amount. We're working in that direction when it became pretty clear that it was going to be best to have one contract with all the centers and have, pay a certain amount to the centers with a stipend per student payable on the third and second Fridays of September and January. So we did work that out with the help of the president of Sunny Day. And that would be Rob Johnson from the Comptonet Foundry, I believe. So we worked out one contract that would be consistent with the five preschools or daycare centers. We have, I think, three of those contracts back. We expect to get the other two. We thought we had them already. They're, they're not contract discussions. It's just, it's about insurance and things like that that they need to work out. So I'm going to ask for approval tonight for these five centers. And they are Tiny Treasures, Wapaka Preschool, Head Start, Sunny Day, and Morning Cottage. Because we do expect by tomorrow, the day after, to have all those contracts signed by their Board of Directors and returned to us for approval. So that means we will have 4K. And those centers next year will have at least one classroom at the Learning Center because we're looking at some special needs kids that might need to be at the Learning Center to have the support staff that we have there. Other than that, we believe that all the capacity at the centers will take in up to what we expect to have as enrollment next year. And that's around one hundred and forty, some kids. It won't all work out that not every student is going to be attending a child care center or a preschool. But if they have capacity, we'll be assigning kids to those schools. Or to the places where there's room. And we've had good cooperation. I think in terms of cost, the cost per pupil for 4K will be no more and should be less than the cost per pupil that we pay for 5K on a, this is a fifty, fifty percent program. But on a pro-rated basis, that's, the only question mark right now that we have is transportation. Obviously, it's going to be...
Do we have to provide it?
We have to provide transportation. Students will ride the morning buses into school. So they'll be arriving early. The 4K program is a three-hour-a-day program in the morning or three hours in the afternoon. There will be transportation for those who leave the center after the morning program to go back home. Some obviously will stay at the center for the rest of the day. That's where they're contracted with. So we have to work out transportation. And we know that won't be easy. That's going to be a real burden on the lead. But other schools are doing it. We think we can, we can figure that out. The contract discussions were, you know, such that we didn't want to have a program that costs so much. By having it as a community-based program, we didn't want it to be so expensive that by the end of the first year, when our questions are answered, we weren't able to sustain it for a second year. We'd have to bring it back into the district. So there were some tough negotiations going on. I believe that we are, when all is said and done, when we get through this first year, I think we'll be in good position to continue this community-based program for... I think we'll be in good position to continue this community-based program for the future. People are excited about it. I know that the daycares, the preschools are eager to get started. Maybe we can get a calendar of events. When are things going to happen next?
Well, next week, Tuesday and Wednesday is parent orientation and student registration. So we'll have a better idea of the numbers and can start there.
It is the call for this September first, I think I asked this.
It is.
Regular kindergarten. Do you anticipate any kids' parents wanting to enroll early like they do for regular kindergarten? And would you go through the same, would you allow that?
It's generally not, ever.
Not done with four-year-olds?
No.
No, okay.
The contract, the master contract was in your packet. If you had a chance to look at it. But money-wise, it's a flat fee for the hiring of the teacher and then a per pupil based on how many students they got. Anything you would like to add, either Mariana or Rhonda?
Part of the orientation will be, we'll, we will be able to determine how many students will be riding buses or need transportation. And as well as, we're going to go through a screening process too, to see if there's any students who will have some needs that need to be serviced through potentially special education or just kind of kept on the radar as well. So we're excited about that school.
How has the word gotten out?
Well, we did a radio show. We've had posters in various locations in the community. It's been in the newspaper.
All the daycares and preschools.
All the daycares and preschools.
And Mrs. Schrader, the secretary at the WLC, does a really nice job too of communicating with the county and identifying all the students in the community of that age that will be four years old by September first. And so if they don't contact WLC to set up an appointment for the screening, then she contacts them personally. So we really, really do a very, very thorough job of trying to connect with every family. Unfortunately, sometimes we do miss them. But we'll probably set up something in the summertime then.
Plus, there'll be people who will move into the district and involve everybody transitioning now.
It's been a lot of planning and something that's brand new and we've been learning. But we really are excited about working with the community center. So excited that it's coming together next year.
What are you thinking you're going to do relative to evaluation? I see in the contract, there's evaluation of staff, of facilities, of the program on an annual basis. Are you gonna wait till the end of the first year? Or is there some kind of, through the launch phase of this, is there something that might be done midterm?
We do have an advisory committee. And that has members from the county and public library, teachers and administrators. And I foresee them meeting periodically through this first year. Teachers that are hired by, those facilities are not mandated to be evaluated by the district under educator effectiveness. So that'll be something they do within-house. But we would still monitor the program, the curriculum. I have the curriculum. We will have professional development from the vendor. So they'll always be part of the goings-on in the district. Also, that Friday day is kind of a space saver for staff development among all the sites. And those are times where we can get together and make sure we're all on the same page.
This is Monday, Tuesday, Thursday program. Friday being that day that we coordinate.
Is it a break-even situation?
Well, it's, I don't know how to define break-even. I tried to do that once. If we said that State Aid will pay for the entire 4K program, that wouldn't be true. State Aid doesn't pay for any of our programs. There's a contribution from the taxpayer as well, the property taxes. But the best way to describe it is it will cost us no more than a 5K. So it will be incorporated in just as the others are. And if you look at our kindergarten, the cost per student, kindergarten is less than the cost per student as a junior in high school, so to speak. So if we compare it then to a 5K, we will come in under, I can tell you, we'll come in under the cost of a 5K student. Okay, that I can tell you.
Does that give you a pretty good idea of what your kindergarten's gonna be the next year?
Well, very good idea, better than we have right now.
Yeah, yes.
Still, at that age, there's still a lot of transition in and out during the summer. Or even during the school year, for that matter. But we would have a much better idea what's coming in, yes. One of the caveats on the cost, also when you say break-even, is that, you know, in state funding, you don't get, you don't get state dollars on money until it's spent. So every dollar we spend for 4K this year is going to come from us, from the taxpayer. Then the following year, we get State Aid on that money, but it's a year delayed. But after that, then we've got the enrollments to support those numbers as well.
Good investment.
I believe so. I think it's time.
And I would think the parents and the community would echo that.
That's, that's what we've heard through this process. But probably more surprising than to me than I expected is the support from the kindergarten first, the second grade teachers who are going to have these kids one step ahead of where they had them before. They're looking forward to that.
And all on the same page, which will be a big plus too. All have learned the same things.
And I'll emphasize, the program, the intent of the program is not as much academic as it is to get kids to learn how to stand in line, how to play together, how to just create that desire to be part of a society, part of a group, so that they are ready when they come to kindergarten. They don't have to, teachers don't have to worry about teaching them those pieces of how to get along. And that will be the emphasis of our program as well. Because if you can prepare kids to learn, if you have a year to prepare kids to learn, they'll just take off in the next years.
I sure wish I had.
There are thirty-eight objectives actually in the 4K curriculum. And I had the opportunity to watch that be assessed in a play-based environment. Because you might hear thirty-eight objectives, what are you doing with these kids? But they're all just learning through discovery and watching them and assessing them according to developmental levels. It's just amazing, so really exciting. So that'll be all information that the 5K teachers will have then, as kids come in.
I'm reading a book by Paul Tough and it's called How Kids Learn. It really emphasizes the need to prepare kids to learn. That people think that those who are the smartest get along the best and achieve the most, but it's not necessarily the case. It's those who are prepared to learn, who have the motivation to learn, who oftentimes perform just as well or better than those who have the mental capacity to learn. And I think that's what our goal is. That's what we're working towards.
Who's the book by?
Paul Tough, T-O-U-G-H. It's case study after case study of kids who shouldn't be successful based on their mental capacity or what you would expect them to know, but end up being successful anyway. Because they have that grit, that's how they describe it.
I think so.
So we need a motion to approve those five contracts.
Just a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Great. Recognition, Molly Deray, once again earned the Fire Safety Teacher Essay Award. It's the second time in a row that her and her class have earned that. Annual Student Art Month exhibit is currently underway in the library. And I should mention, that's the second significant art event this month. Last Friday night at the Yale House was the Love of Art Affair, I think it was called, where they auctioned off student works as well as community professional artists for money to be raised towards art scholarships. And that was, that was very well-attended and successful. And then John Kronkowitz, congratulations for being awarded the N.W. Oshkosh Russ Young Leadership and Achievement Award. Under thank you notes, we've received a thank you note from the family of Jim Swenson. And he would be the father of our aide, Brendan Towne, for donation made to the High School Scholarship Foundation.
Need a motion to?
No. Communiti action under administrator, we have future dates, March twenty-second. Over the years, we've heard about the Senator Herb Cole Excellence Scholarship and Fellowship Rewards banquet. We've had staff and students receive scholarships. I think the staff, teachers who get a scholarship get a thousand dollars for themselves and a thousand dollars to put towards a program in school. And then students get, I don't know, is it a thousand dollars as well towards college? I think, I think it's a thousand dollars. A number of those awards are given out across the state. And then they hold banquets at, I believe, four different locations. They have selected Wapaka High School to be the host for the banquet this year, March twenty-second. We're quite proud of that. It's a very organized affair. Mr. Becker, do you want to talk about the organization?
Somebody from Senator Cole's office has made several visits to come through and look at our location. One of the qualifications is that we have to be within something like five miles of a private jet-capable airport. And so Senator Cole jets in right before the ceremony. His staff has everything down to a T. There's about an eight-page explanation of what needs to happen in order to host the event. So it's, it's been fun working with his office just because they have it down to assignments.
Did you all get invites?
The district got thirty invites to be distributed to cabinet members, school board members, et cetera. And Mr. Becker's office mailed out invites to each of you. You should have received them at home for you and a guest, I believe. And that is courtesy of?
Senator Cole's office.
Senator Cole's office. So if you can attend, that would be great. It is a Saturday.
Saturday of the twenty-second. And there's an email for all cabinet members. Take a look at that when you give the chance and respond back to them.
Who does the cooking for us?
It's being catered at the Yale House is who they contracted with.
That's no minor affair either. They have very strict requirements for food and how the tables are set up. Only people are set up at a table. There could be nothing else going on in the building at the time of this event.
There's a reception beforehand. And our musicians will be playing and singing for that reception. But yeah, it's very organized.
Does anybody in Wapaka receive an award?
I don't think so, not this year. We've had winners, but not this year. I know we had a picture in the back of Rose Lund shaking hands with Senator Cole when she went to the banquet that was held at Stevens Point many years ago. That's only one thing that's coming out. I'll just give you a heads up so you can put it on your calendars. But April twenty-second then, we're very excited to host the DPI. We'll be having a meeting in Wapaka. And it's a meeting of the Rural Education and Library Committee. And Dr. Tony Evers will be here, along with legislators, teachers from around the area, and business people from around the area will be coming in that day. I'm having a continental breakfast at the high school. We're gonna set this up in the media center. And then they'll have their meeting. Then they'll break, we'll serve lunch to them. After that, they are looking for entertainment from our music department and then a tour of our building and specifically our aid program. So that's gonna happen on school day on April twenty-second. That same day, that's a Tuesday. Starting on that Monday, we will have Molly Shamble and her husband, Shawn, coming in to speak to kids about type one diabetes in the morning. They run an organization that supports children who have type one diabetes. And it's their mission to educate those, educate those kids that there are no limits placed on them by the type one diabetes and educate their friends about what it means to be afflicted with that disease. So Molly will be talking to high school students on Monday at eight o'clock, I believe, seven fifty-five.
Tuesday, I believe.
I think Monday is the middle school. There'll be two presentations at middle school Monday morning and then a presentation at high school on Tuesday morning. And that will culminate then with a fundraiser being put on by a number of businesses in the community. And that will include art products, art, artwork, artwork from our students. And I believe elementary through high school, at least middle school through high school.
Elementary was taken off the table.
Okay. Middle school through high school, we'll be auctioning off some artwork from those students as part of that fundraiser. There'll be additional contributions beyond that. But it's a way to involve students in a worthwhile event. So we're looking forward to that in April twenty-second, twenty-first and twenty-second. April first, as you know, will be election day. And April eighth will be our regular board meeting here at five forty-five PM. Next item under administrator is a resignation. It's elementary art teacher Jim Lang. And you have the notice of resignation in front of you. I gave you a separate handout of that. So I would ask for a motion to accept that.
I'm moved.
All in favor? Aye. Brings us to board monitoring. This month, as we do annually at this time, our end policy is relative to citizenship and responsibility. As you know, we tried to do our own surveys for a number of years. And that worked fairly well, but we ended up saying it's hard to compare one year to the next. People weren't quite satisfied with the whole-built survey. So we've gone to a DPI survey on school climate. And it's a computer-based survey that all of our students, grades three through twelve, complete. But our policy on citizenship, we thought there's a correlation between the questions asked on the survey versus the citizenship and responsibility criteria as part of the board's end policy. Shared community values of honesty, respect, responsibility, compassion, and self-discipline, volunteering time and talents, critical thinking, and rights and responsibilities as citizens. That's the citizenship one. The responsibility relates to critical thinking and problem-solving skills, creativity and innovation, commitment to attend school and be an active participant, and establish good health and wellness practices. So with that, I think probably you representing the high school?
Sure.
Let's start with that.
Okay. I have given you quite a thick packet. I don't expect you to, I'm not gonna go through it piece by piece. I'm gonna let you read it whenever you'd like to. But what we found in a nutshell is, number one, the number of students that took the survey, as indicated on the survey, almost doubled from last year. Two reasons for that. One is that seventh and eighth grade information is included in the survey. And the second is that our seniors were much better canvassed than they had been the previous year. So we feel like we have great representation. And I've got good news and bad news. The good news is, we did almost the same as we did last year. The bad news is, we did almost the same as we did last year. When you look at the different graphs that are in there, the dots line up almost on top of each other. A little bit of switching back and forth. I ran the numbers a whole bunch of different ways for you. I compared boys and girls. I compared year to year. I compared As to Cs and As to Fs. And those, those letter designations of As and Fs are as students reported them themselves. So the survey said, what do you get? Mostly As, mostly Bs. So the students responded, you know, and just like last year, of course, the students that get As are more positive about their school experience than those students that get the Cs or the Fs. And you can see the lines. The C line is halfway in between the A and the F line. So it all makes sense. It all lines up pretty well. I think the area that we get the most information is the open text responses. And it's, it's certainly a mixed bag when you start reading through those. I almost hesitate to open it up because I know it's gonna be some tough stuff. We're gonna have to read through some, some things that we don't wanna hear necessarily. But, you know, it does break it down by age level as we look at it. And I've included those comments for you. When I printed them out, there are forty-one pages of text comments. And there were three questions that were asked. And the questions were, what do you like about your school? What do you wish were different at this school? And what do you wish I would have asked you about your school? So those are the three questions. And, you know, last year, I- And, you know, last year, I talked about the fact that relationship issues were one of the big things that students raised concerns about. It's still a concern, but there are new concerns also. You notice I skipped right over the things that they said were good. We tend to do that just because we're most concerned about the things that aren't so It would be interesting to actually categorize the responses and see how many there were in each category. Haven't had a chance to do that yet. We just got access to this yesterday, so we're still kind of working our way through it. But here are some of the issues. Some of them will say teachers. They don't like a teacher. Sometimes they are general about it. We don't like teachers as a whole. Sometimes they name a teacher. There are references to school being a jail. Why don't they let us go out all of the doors? There are too many rules here. And yet, on the good side, there are people that said, we have so much more freedom here. So you're not going to win, I guess. They're upset that no soda's being sold. They wish they had an open campus. They're tired of the small portion sizes they're given at lunch, and they think that Michelle Obama plan is not working. There is still example of teasing and bullying, and there was even the name of one, a first name anyway, and I do intend to follow up on that. They think there should be less homework, better computers, more breaks, more time with friends. There are a few about student parking lot and parking concerns. That's been a big problem this winter when the lines no longer appear. Students didn't get that they weren't supposed to park three deep. I don't know why they didn't understand that. I had talked about maybe having some of our detention kids go out with scrapers and find the lines. That would have been healthy, I think. And some students even said that nothing was wrong, that they didn't have any problems. If I was going to put percentages, I'd say thirty percent weren't happy about their teacher, their class, or their subjects. About thirty percent said lunch issues that they didn't like. Twenty percent had issues with policies like dress code, doors, parking rules. And then about twenty percent had other things, and I categorized ten of that twenty percent as just plain garbage. I thought about striking out some of the stuff that's in there, but I left it all for you. There's some expletives in there. I'm sorry to say, the F-bomb is used more than once, but I think that kind of tells what student was sending that to, you know? So it's raw data. Look at it at your leisure. When we asked, what do you wish, was asked, most of them said, nothing, you got it, lots of good questions. There were seventy questions, sixty-seven questions, so we asked them a lot of things. Again, some students said, ask us what we want for lunch. And students talked about respect issues between students and students, and staff and students. Lot of irrelevant stuff, especially with that last question. Lot of garbage. In conclusion, a lot of fun to look at. I think you'll enjoy, especially skim through those comments. They're very, very small. I have to get my little reading glasses, my cheaters, to be able to even read it, but that's how it is on a computer, too. And you'll get kind of a sense of what, especially the articulate students, are saying their concerns are.
What will you do with this information?
You know, I've been thinking about, number one, I want it to go out to teachers. I think teachers need to be able to see the broad data also and see the good things and the bad things, see the concerns that the students are articulating. But also, I think it would be neat to get some students to take a look at it and give some perspective. What do you think of the responses that are given? You know, a few of the responses said, I don't know why we're even doing this. No one's going to take a look at it. You know, well, they're wrong. We are going to look at it, and we're going to do things about it. It helps to define what exactly we're doing at school. We're really spending a lot of effort on a program called PBIS. You've heard about it from the elementary school and middle school, about these schools getting on board, too. And, you know, it's one of those things where we hope to make a real difference in the climate of the building. We hope that when PBIS is really rolled out, we're going to see a substantial difference in those graphs. So right now, that's where we're putting our effort, our time and effort.
We also have a home room table in April for the ones we talked with staff that discuss those issues in the home room.
But are there three, say, the numbers are, are there some initiatives that you expect to drive out the backside of this after you've had the whole room and had all the discussions? Were you focused? I know it should ultimately, obviously, tie it to the ends, but are there, do you expect to have some specific projects to work on? You know, the PBIS umbrella really captures all of these things together underneath it, and it's been demonstrated at elementary schools, been demonstrated in various schools throughout the state. We think that if we can implement it with fidelity, getting all teachers on board and doing things that get all students to take ownership of it, that this will provide just a dramatic impact. So that's where I see us going, and I really do think that after we talk about this information with our students and staff, it's going to help them to get on board.
I'd also suggest that we're a little bit confused, maybe, about our efforts with PBIS, thinking that, believing that it's making a difference in the culture in our schools, but not necessarily seeing those results on this survey. I think Mr. Espoza is going to talk. I don't mean to set you up, but.
Thank you.
And actually, that is sort of reflected in the question that I have, was when students bring concerns forward or even enthusiasms forward, are they the same kinds of things that you're seeing in this? I know you haven't had much time to look at it.
Right.
But I'm.
Were there any surprises?
Were there any surprises, either in terms of the number or the range?
You know, going through a survey like this is almost a visceral process. It takes time to really chew on it and think about it and come up with how you feel. The first reaction is always a little bit of numbness, a little bit of, ah, boy, you know? For me this year, what I'm still trying to get over is the amount of expletives that are being used. I'm very disappointed about that, very, very, very concerned about that. And I know that's probably a superficial thing, and I need to get to the deeper meaning, but even, you'll see that there are some responses that are very articulate, very well-written, but they're few and far between. We need to get our students really working on that also, being able to talk about what their hopes and fears are and really be able to put it together in a phrasing that we're willing to listen to. I don't always do so well listening to F-bombs, you know? And I exclusively ask students not to use that kind of language around me. I deal with a lot of upset students, and I do have occasion to hear that once in a while. Not appropriate in our school setting by any means. But, yeah, I think the big thing is just you're hit by some of that.
I think one big change that we've seen on the survey is that students have a visual where they see that there's a change on safety and security in our building. So they see the improvement that's taken place this year. However, there is that question, why can't we use any expletive? And we have a set standard that we don't want students using unless it's for an emergency during the school day, including right after school hours, if they go through the main entrance and student entrance. There's a question always coming up all the time, why can't, my car's on this far end of the parking lot, why can't I just go out and take it? So.
You've definitely seen a lot.
We've identified that there's improvement, but yet, hopefully not be part of the ownership of that improvement.
You know, Rob, you shouldn't complain about the kids and their parking.
Yeah.
You ought to go out there tonight with the community chorus. I tell you, you ought to see how they all park.
Yeah, for sure.
And the band, I think, so we involve the.
Oh.
You know, after you're done with your feedback and everything from the teachers and the students, can you give us a little synopsis of, you know, what kind of information they give back to you, what their feeling is about this survey and this stuff?
Sure.
I just think it would be interesting to hear what this.
Let's move on to middle school. Mr. Reynolds?
All right. A lot of the information that you can find out about middle school is on Rob's paperwork because middle school had to take either high school version or elementary school version. So we split it. Five and six went down to the elementary, seven and eight went up to high school, and I couldn't split up the elementary version. So I have seventh and eighth grade data. What's interesting is that eighth grade, every question is more negative than seventh grade.
Does it always, does it seem like it continues? That's just.
I think that's kind of.
No, it's sort of a luster.
It's, every question. There's a couple of them I feel challenged at school. They're dead even. Teachers encouraged me to assess my quality of my own work. You know, most of the questions are in the agree area. A few of them go down to neutral. Couple get into negative. Eighth grade generally doesn't think that school is fun here, but then again, they really want to be at high school. They want to be comics, they don't want to be Panthers, they hate the fact that they have to work hard anymore, and they just think high school's going to be so much better, and that's where all the freedom is. Until they get there, then they say this place is a jail, so I don't know.
And wish they were back in middle school.
Yeah. But we do not have any parking issues with our students, so. Other things that, you know, they generally say that they like school. One of the biggest downers is students at this school respect other students who are different than they are, and it's something that we see all the time. We do lyceums on respect and anti-bullying and trying to, you know, show empathy towards each other, and it's just hard. They can talk about it until it comes down to them and their friends, and then they don't want to think about it that way. You know, last week, let's spread the word to end the word, the R-word. And parents and teachers feel that the more you talk about it, the more they're going to use it versus stopping to use it. So if you don't know, the R-word is retard, and it's such a derogatory term that hurts so many people, and kids profusely use it all the time. You know, for me, that's worse than a swear word because they don't think that it hurts anybody. They just, well, I'm being one of those. Well, no, it hurts a lot of other people, and, you know, I think the culture that we have, not just at school, but in general, they see things on TV, they see things out there, and they use that terminology, not knowing the history behind it, not realizing perhaps who it may hurt, and perhaps not caring as much as they should. I think that's the biggest thing here, and we combat it all the time. And second, the same thing with PBIS, you know, we're hoping to change the culture. We're trying to do things to get the word out that, you know, it has to be that way. And I think, you know, the kids all think that they're doing a good job showing respect to others, but other people don't do it. So last year, we see it here. It's, I think, those few kids who make the most verbal and obvious aggression paint the minds of the majority.
I'll ask Mr. Espoza the same thing, but is there a discrepancy between what you see and what they put on these surveys?
I don't, I think the office is also a spot where it's hard to see all the good things because they usually come to the office for the negatives. And so, you know, we look at the data from PBIS. We look at what referrals are for, and there are a few kids who are doing a lot of these things that show on here. But as a whole, mostly kids are doing the right thing. They're treating each other with respect. And the other thing with bullying, they don't always report it. They think, I'll just take it, but they feel like I've been bullied. And part of that is they don't know what the definition is, even though we try to define it for them. But they think, well, they hit me, so they bully me. No, it's not the same. So there's those kinds of things. But as a whole, you know, the issues I see on here, yeah, those are the same issues that we try to work on, but it's with people, not with everybody.
Mr. Espoza?
Well, the responses that we received for the elementary survey, last year, we had third and fourth grade responses. This year, what's equal to the survey is we had third, fourth, and fifth and sixth grade. And when you look at the graph, the questions, they're almost identical. So the question, do they get a little bit worse as they get older? This particular case, they did not. The third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, you can put it right over the top of the third and fourth from last year. That, again, is good and bad all at the same time. What I learned from the survey for third and fourth grade was the text answers that the kids had given. I was like, Rob, I was afraid to read them at first, and you start reading, you see the word bully a lot in the elementary one. And at first, I was, darn, I thought we were making some differences with that. But as I thought more about it, I think the reason I'm seeing more of the comments about there's either less bullies, or there's more bullies, or I have been bullied, things like that, is because we're constantly bringing that up in school, and it's something that we're, we have consistently tried to educate students on, and their families as well. So I'm hoping that when we look at those text responses, that's just because we're making it a priority to address any of those situations that we may have at the WLC. So I'm kind of looking at it like that. And we look at PBIS, I was hoping for, to see, and we're above neutral and agree and strongly agree in all thirty-one categories, last year and this year, and that's a good thing. But I was hoping to see a significant increase that we had PBIS and, you know, wishful thinking, I guess. I do see kids doing the appropriate things, but again, that's bad stat, and I think, as Rob pointed out, you're dealing with a few kids that kind of, especially in the office area, that maybe sometimes tweak our visions as to what we're doing. The one thing that we're doing differently, and I think that we're seeing the bullying comments, is we are working on conflict resolution at the younger ages. You know, the way it was dealt with back, if someone did something on the playground, for example, they would be written up, sent to the office, the office would discipline them, and that would fix the problem. But that wasn't working. So what we have changed with PBIS is that if there are two students on the playground and they're arguing with one another, the adult on the playground is to bring both over, not write them up right away, but to talk with them and work the situation out with the students, help the students facilitate their conversation to work through that in an appropriate manner. That's different from the way it used to be done. So those are the types of things that we're working on as far as the elementary, working on conflict resolution, and we're also working on social skills. Some of the things that happen that are determined to be bullying scenarios are kids who just lack the social skills to get along with other students. And so with the school counselors and with Scott and their PBIS lessons, they go into classrooms every day. There are three to six classrooms that get a lesson on kindness, on what bullying is an identification, and how to identify that, and really, how to solve your problems in an appropriate manner. So those are the types of things we're trying to instill in the kids, especially from kindergarten through fourth grade. Now, you'll see in front of you, I also wanted to kind of get a little bit, I put it by your place, that is first and second grade responses. And I asked Mr. Dolsky, or Mr. Bonneman and Mrs. Dolsky to go through and just kind of ask the same questions, tweak them so they're appropriate for the grade level, and get some feedback from first and second graders as well, just to see what they're thinking. And there's only forty-seven responses in each of the first grade and the second grade, but their scores with the same types of questions are a little bit higher in the strongly agree area than even the third and fourth graders. And we're hoping to carry those responses over into third and fourth grade in the future.
Questions?
I just have just an observation that I understand how your gut might clench when you're reading some of the negatives, but I really do think it's important, those good things people are saying are very valuable, too. And I know that you do pay attention to those things and try to build on them, as Rob said. Good.
I would agree. We didn't want to come here tonight and say, here's, here's, all the good things that people are saying, and try to ignore the others. The good ones speak for themselves. But very good point. We need to recognize that there's some very good, people perceive some very good things going on.
Yeah, and I think it is important to recognize that, and certainly not dismiss them, for sure.
I have a comment. During National Effort Week, we have the elementary, you know, teachers and kids come into the ag department, and I have this senior guy that is struggling obeying the rules, you know, he's just struggling right now. And Mrs. Blondi came in to see my class, and she always wants to know, like, you know, which of you guys did I have? So she had this one boy in class, and she asked, well, how is he doing? And I said, well, I said, maybe you need to go over those elementary rules. So, I mean, this is a big senior boy. So, Mrs. Blondie goes, put your hand over your heart. He did it. And he goes, she goes to him, now, promise that you will be kind. And he said, I promise to be kind. And I promise to be prepared. And he goes, I promise to be prepared. She said, I promise to be respectful. And he said, I promise to be respectful. And I said, can you add one more? And she said, sure. And I said, I promise not to wear my hat in school anymore. And she did it, he said it, and I haven't seen the hat. I mean, not even in the hall, you know, much less my class, but like, you know, so sometimes there's such a connection with the elementary teachers that it, it hits those kids yet, even how old they are. So, I thought, boy, that kid must have had a lot of respect for her that.
But listen to how positive the things that she was asking.
And how she said it. I promise to be kind, promise to be kind, he said, you know. I mean, this is right in middle class, he said it.
In front of the whole class?
And has he been all year since he's not wearing his hat?
Well, he's off and on with it, but when he gets mad, you know, then he puts in his heels. So, he can be good for a month and then all of a sudden, you know, somebody makes him mad and he's going to try to get in trouble. But I just thought like, wow, I just wish it was something that was really neat.
Mr. Espoza, I, I think you talk about bullying and the fact that the word keeps coming up. I do, I think when you talk about something that much, you're just generating awareness and you might still be dealing with people having different definitions of the word. But certainly, I think it's, I, at least my personal opinion is that it's probably more positive than anything. And I think that's what you're kind of intimated to and I agree with you. Could be wrong.
I think you're right. Because of the, because of the difference of what we see versus what the responses are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of the forty-three second grade or, yes, second grade students that were responding, how did you happen to get in that cross-section, the one that said, thank you for being a great principal?
I have to say, Mr. Voneman, for me.
Was it just a random selection of students?
It wasn't in the room.
You didn't think we read it, did you?
I was going to highlight that.
Consent agenda. Is your motion? Roll call.
Johnny Baldwin.
Yes.
First degree field.
Yes.
Stephen Johnson.
Yes.
Kenley Hampson.
Yes.
Sandy Robinson.
Yes.
David Mannion.
Yes.
Steve Drumble.
Yes. Your motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, but I do want to say something that's, that I think we should is, you know, thinking about Barry Lutzey. Very sad situation with him and I think, you know, we probably all know him, my kids had him, I lived in the neighborhood with him. Just a truly nice guy in a very sad situation to be losing him. Just wanted to say that.
Got a motion.
That was a motion, sorry.
I say we've got a motion, give us a second.
Second.
All in favor?